All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled meeting in Governing Body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, July 24, 2025. And we have Pastor Zach Terrell with Become Church here is gonna do the invocation. If you could stand with us if you're able.
Father, thank you for this meeting of the Governing Body of our city and for the opportunity to be a part of it and to participate in representative government. I would thank you for these representatives of ours who make decisions that affect our lives every day. We pray for your wisdom as we consider the things that are on the docket today. And as we look toward the future, God, we pray that there be favor and blessing in Spring Hill, Kansas. We pray that you'd open good doors and arrange good partnerships. Lord, we're praying for other governing bodies and businesses and the civic organizations and families in the community that are affected by these decisions, Lord, that they would be good ones and that you would guide us to your very best. Lord, we pray that it would be in Spring Hill as it is in heaven. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe, lawful, and under God, and in this world, to the Lord Jesus Christ.
Madam Clark, if you please take the roll.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Peel. Mr. Theron.
Here.
Mrs. Feedback.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a request to remove item number seven, and then we added executive session number two, number three, and number four. Other than that, are there any requested changes or additions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. We did not have anyone sign up on the list, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, now would be your time. If you do, we ask that you step up and state your name and address. If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time. We'll move on to a presentation. We have a presentation by the Johnson County Library about the Spring Hill renovations. And I have three different names here, so I don't know who's coming first. I've got Tricia Solentrop, County Librarian, Brooke Sinali, and Hillary Beishore. I don't know if I said those names right, but we'll try it.
You you did a perfect job.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tricia Solentrop. I'm the County Librarian, the Library Director for the Johnson County Library System. Wanted to thank you for your time here on the agenda. I'm here with, as the mayor said, our one of our architects from B.C. Design Group to share the updates on the renovation and the refresh of our Spring Hill Library. I wanted to thank you all and Lane Massey for the partnership over the years. I know we have got to have breakfast several times and lots of conversations with Lane about Spring Hill and your development and future and the library's future as well. So thanks for that partnership and the time investment with us. We know that you all share our mission of providing access to ideas, information, materials, and experiences for your growing community. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Brewer, who has joined us today. Commissioner Brewer is, of course, the Commissioner from this district. She's also the liaison from the Board of County Commissioners to the Library Board. So she is a favorite of ours. Don't tell the other commissioners that. So we can go to the next slide. Wanted to provide you a little bit of context on the project up to date. You can see the timeline there. Most people, of course, come into a project or become aware of a project or focus on the actual length of construction or the renovation. And we all know if you've built a building or done any work on your house, that sometime that sometimes that work begins years, maybe decades before that. So in 2018, the Library Board approved a study to renovate and modernize both the Spring Hill branch and the De Soto branch. And once the scope of that study was determined, the library conducted public engagement with citizens in both communities to gauge their needs. We wanted to hear what the patrons wanted. So some of those things were spaces to sit, to meet, to study, conference rooms, study rooms, and to collaborate. And so we're very excited to work with our architects to be able to include a new study room and a conference room in the renovation of Spring Hill. The patrons also wanted Spring Hill to be open longer, which personally I love to hear. You're never going to get an argument out of me about more library hours. And so Spring Hill will be the pilot location of a of a new program that will grant community members secure access to the library outside of the library's current open hours. If you've ever been to a gym that's open 24 hours, that kind of concept, you'll have a key card, you'll be able to badge in, it'll let you use the library if you have signed up for that program. We won't be open 24 hours, but we'll extend the the current hours. You'll be able to pick up holds, browse the collection, use computers, printers, those types of things. So it's our way to extend library service, extend access, as well as be mindful of our spending. We won't be adding additional staff, instead relying on technology to provide them with that access. All the details about that are still in development, and as we get closer to reopening, we'll start to talk about those specifics and how patrons can register for that access. After our studies concluded, then the Library Board approved the budget for this project for the renovation. That approval happened in 2023, and then in 2024, we onboarded our architects. And then early this year, we onboarded our construction manager. So we have recently completed the design and well as construction documents, and we're in the final stages of bidding. We are awaiting action from the Spring Hill Planning Commission and then ultimately Library Board approval of the guaranteed maximum price and closure date. So that will be in the next month. Right now, we're targeting late August for a close. And we the Library Board received those tentative dates last month. So we've already sent out information to citizens, library users in this general service area, even though it's not official and we still need board action, giving them a little heads up about that process progressing. So next slide, please. So on to the renovation highlights. As you may know, we're going to expand Spring Hill, about 1,300 square feet we'll add on. That expansion will be the children's area. And as I mentioned, we added study room and a conference room. There will be more natural light. I know you're all familiar with that building. There are windows all around the building, but they're very high up. And so our architects granted me my big wish. I'm like, can we take those windows all the way to the floor and really take advantage of the south, the west, and the east light? And so after much work and study with an existing building, sometimes when you bust into an existing building, you have surprises, and they were they were able to say, yes, we can kind of take those windows all the way down. So lots of other things that you might expect in a new building, new carpeting, paint, lighting, those types of things. We'll also add an outdoor patio that will kind of be situated between the existing building and the expansion. We'll have a new main entrance that will kind of be in the middle of those, and we'll see those a little bit later in the in the layouts. So those are some of the highlights. I'm going to turn it over to Hillary, and she's gonna give you a little bit more details.
Thank you all. You can go to the next slide. Like Tricia said, my name's Hillary Beishore. I am the architect and project manager for this with B.C. Design Group. Brooke Sinelli was meant to be here today. She's dealing with a family health emergency, so she asked me to apologize on her behalf for not being able to be here today. I'm going to give you all just a high-level overview of this project so far. Please feel free to ask questions if you have any. You can go to the next slide. So here on the left, you'll see an orientation plan. If anyone's not familiar with where the library is right now, it's on the corner of Hale and Webster Street. The square with the X through the middle of it is your current building, and then the kind of diagonal L shape is the addition that we're adding. On the right-hand side, you can see the site plan that starts to show our improved parking, the courtyard that Tricia mentioned in between the addition and the existing building, as well as an additional outdoor space to the north of the building. We're also improving all the sidewalks around the building, as well as adding landscaping around the building. On the next slide, you will see an image of what the exterior is starting to look like. So for the addition, we took a lot of materials from the existing building, some brick. We obviously added a lot of glass because we want natural light in. We added a screen element that's got some literary elements on it to help control some of that light. And then for the existing building, we're going to do some upgrades, add some signage, paint the brick a little bit to make it more cohesive with our addition, et cetera. Here you'll see a floor plan. So on the left is diagrammatic floor plan, and the center in that green area is the courtyard. That's where our new main entrance is going to be. So you'll come in to the left. At the top of the plan is the kids' area, and then to the right will be your adult area. We're going to utilize the current main door as a staff entrance, so staff has their own secure way in and out of the building. And like Tricia said, we're adding a conference and a study room on the west side of the building. This is an image of the children's area. So our theme for this building is spring. So you're going to see a lot of fun colors, organic shapes. We're trying to bring nature into this area and make it a fun space for kids to be. And on the next image, you'll see the inside of our conference room. So all the conference room and study room will both feature technology that patrons can use, TVs. We'll have whiteboards that patrons can use, flexible furniture. So this room doesn't just have to be a conference room. If they want to move the tables and have story time in there and kind of control some of that noise that we know can happen when you get 10 little kids in one small space together, they can do that. Our goal with these rooms was to make them as flexible as possible so that the patrons can use these rooms however they need to. I'll turn it back over to Tricia.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, Spring Hill is expected to close later in August, and the expected reopen is mid-2026. Before we close, staff can help patrons in person or on the phone or online understand what their options are for moving their holds and being able to pick them up at a different location, whatever's most convenient to them. And we are, of course, working with the city and with other local community groups so that we can stay connected. Things like, of course, we'll be at your Fall Festival, the Spooktacular, and then the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, among lots of other events, working with the schools as well. So we will not be standing up separate library services while the building's closed. The construction is a short time, so we want to get in there, get that done, and then offer connections, library programs, and services in other ways. So we are excited about this project. As I said, it's been in the works since 2018, so we're all excited to see it kick off, as I'm sure you all are. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say I'm excited about this. I know I've been, I think I've been involved for the last four years on it. So meeting with you guys multiple times, kind of getting getting the ball really, really going again. So I'm excited for this. I think it'll be good. I think the library will be utilized a lot more. I think it's great to have for the community, and I think making these necessary changes will really add value to it. So yeah.
Great. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance. But if there are any questions or comments on that, now would be the time.
No.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
As amended.
As amended. Sorry, as amended. You actually took that one off.
I move. We approve the consent agenda as amended. Second.
Got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal counsel action items. And the first item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number 2025-09, amending the Spring Hill Unified Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision Regulations Sections 17.330, 17.338, 17.348. Mrs. Long, you have the floor.
Hi. Good evening. Tonight, we bring you a proposed ordinance 2025-09 to amend Chapter 17 of the Spring Hill Municipal Code for the M1 General Industrial District, as well as the property development standards and the height and area and yard exceptions. The city's current zoning code allows a maximum building height of 55 feet for industrial. And due to evolving technology and automated warehousing and modern logistics systems, those buildings now are going taller. So we thought this was a good time to look at our code and and try to try to amend that so that we can allow some of those projects to come here. As a result of doing that, we held a public hearing with the Planning Commission on July 8. Staff had originally recommended to amend the maximum height to 188 feet, which is 15 stories. So each story is about 12 foot. And of course, that would go through the appropriate Planning Commission and city approvals, along with all the safeguards to ensure compatibility with surrounding areas. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to reduce the maximum height to 144 and 12 stories. They also wanted to increase the rear setback for the industrial zoning to 25 foot. We had actually recommended during the 188 to reduce the 20 foot that it currently was or is now to 10 foot, and they wanted to move it up to 25 feet. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but there is a suggested motion. So we do recommend amending it to the proposed, what the Planning Commission proposed, at 144 foot with 25 foot rear setback.
Did they want the setbacks higher just because or larger because it was going to be bigger buildings, so you have a little bit more space? Is that was that kind of the thought process?
It was. They didn't like it that it'd be so close to the neighboring. Our thought was.
I'll say, what was your reasoning behind the?
Our reasoning was to set it back more off of the front to use it. You know, you're kind of utilizing, you can't really utilize a lot of that area in the back, so we thought it would just be a little bit better to set it back more, and you can utilize more in the front.
That was kind of my thought. When they started saying that, I'm like, I don't think you understand. You're pushing it now towards the road.
Yeah.
Especially with a lot of our open M1 areas close to the railroad tracks. So is it going to make its size be 25 feet from the railroad track then? Property line, right?
Yes.
That's what I didn't like about that part is I'm like, yeah, I'd really prefer to push it back.
And I will say, we did research. A lot of the surrounding cities like Olathe, Overland Park, and I think even Leewood, and they have the 144 feet, 12 stories, with the 10-foot rear setback. And that's kind of why we went ahead with that 10-foot. And it just made sense for to set it back off the road more.
And were you guys just trying to be a little bit more aggressive than other cities with the 188?
We were.
Yeah.
Just to ensure we could capture any of the manufacturing.
I don't have a problem with the 144.
Yeah.
I'm I wouldn't even be opposed to 188, but I'm fine with the 144. I'm just the setbacks. I mean, I don't feel like we should go more than we have now. I mean, that just makes it more difficult, that thing.
Yeah. Can we can we separate them, the two?
Yes.
And say, we agree with the 144, but we want to look at something different than than the 25?
Yep. You can just put it in your motion.
Yes. So in your motion, we'll outline what it is you're changing about the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Do we have to send it back to them, or can we?
Can we? But if we do them separately, I'm assuming if if they went against it, don't we have to have like a super majority for the 25-foot portion? So
Yes.
Shouldn't we not separate out the two to vote?
It's up to you guys how you want to present the motion. If you want to send it back down to them, bring it back up on that part, you can reject their
I guess.
Because it's currently what?
What are you? What are your guys?
Currently 20, 10?
I think the 10 or I'm okay with even 15, but I don't think we should go further than the 20.
Okay.
My big thing when I was watching the meeting, I'm like, they're talking about, I think they were more thinking 25 feet from all the sides, but I don't know if there's a way to say 10 feet from a from the backside or a or like the
Well.
We can make it specific to something that's not like a housing development, or I know that's what their major concern was, was that if it's close to housing or something.
Yeah, I mean, usually in industrial, you know, it's backing up to industrial anyway. So that also kind of was another reason why we went to 10-foot.
We have a planning commissioner member here. Can we have? Can we let him say anything for the meeting? No. I just can't remember off the top of my head what all the thing. I mean, I watched a lot of episodes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to. A lot of it.
Major concerns were. I liked I liked the 144. I thought that was probably the right call.
And to weigh in from what I mean, I was at the Planning Commission, too. Those were the two largest topics of conversation, which was, what's the maximum height cap going to be? And then this max, the rear setback?
Yeah.
And you're you, I think you've captured it accurately, that it was a concern that 10 feet was a little close to if it was a residential subdivision behind an M1.
Can we maybe throw something in there for that if it's, you know, 10 feet?
Can you have a?
Typically, but 25 if it's if it's bordering a residential subdivision or something along those lines?
Or can you legally do that?
I would say that that is tricky enough that I would recommend making that a separate zoning code change on its own, rather than trying to legislate it from the dais here tonight.
Okay.
Just because I, if we're going to split it out based on what the zoning behind it is, we probably need to have a redo the chart a little bit and make it.
I guess we probably do an overlap with that, right, or something on it? My my other thing is, I really think we need to look at having a separate zoning, like an M2, rather than having M1 that just has this big encompassing.
Yeah.
Whether we create something for small industrial or if we go a little bit more aggressive with like an M2.
Yeah.
I know every city is a little different. What's your guys' thoughts on that? Because I think right now we're we're putting way too much in one category.
Yeah, I mean, M1 is really big, really broad.
Yeah.
I would be fine with splitting it up into into two different ones. I don't think.
So something maybe we should do a discussion item on separately. I know this needs to be done because we have plenty of projects that that we're looking at.
Yeah.
It's something we need to probably.
I think we could at least put it on for a discussion.
The Planning Commission at that meeting was wanting to kind of start back up the comp plan and looking that look at that again. So we're going to do a work session in September.
Okay.
For it. And that is a big one of theirs. So that will be discussed as put like adding an M2 where you put your heavier and industrial and keeping.
I know we've had this issue with other smaller industrial parks that we've looked at, I think, a couple of years ago, that like over there on Woodland that we said, we don't really want to make it M1 because look what happened with the, you know, the cement plant.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, I think there's some work to do there. But for the time being, I'm good with the 144. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on the setback.
I'm good with the 144. I'd I'd be fine with the 10-foot or compromising at 15-foot. But I think going up.
Or keeping it at 20. Isn't 20 now?
20 is current. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd even be.
I don't think increasing is probably.
Yeah, I think increasing, it's the wrong move.
Oh, PJ, you have any thoughts?
I'm still learning about this, the zoning side of things. So I'm going to kind of defer to you guys on that one. Unfortunately, not as well read on it and haven't been a part of a lot of those major.
I think a lot of his preference, you know, it's just.
What do you guys think?
I think the 144 is okay, but I'd rather keep the other same rather than just changing it to change it. I think keeping it the same keeps it in the same ballpark as all the current infrastructure and all the the current buildings, whereas if you change it, you're going to start getting into people either expanding or something like that and reducing it or vice versa, moving.
So you want to stay at like the 20?
I think staying at the 20 would be better.
Kristen, you have any thoughts?
I'd agree with the 144. Probably do some more research about the setback. That'd be something that I'm really not well versed on. And I guess for me, seeing an example somehow of what it's like with having it a little closer and then a little further, and maybe even talking to somebody like a resident, somebody in a residence that has it setback a certain way, just to see what their thoughts are about it, too. So I don't have anything to say about that on the setback. But the 144, I agree with. 188, I think, is pretty.
I mean, I'd be okay with saying 144 and 20.
Yeah, I'd be fine with 20.
I mean, like you said, it doesn't change anything as far as the setback goes. We give a little bit more height. And then maybe as we start to add some other things, we can readjust. But I mean, that's where I'm kind of at with.
Well, and also you said something that stood out to me, too, is that, you know, I don't know how long, I don't know how many years we've had it at the 20, but there's a lot of buildings probably built on the 20. And so if you change it, you're going to have some closer, some further, some whereas you have 20, all the rest of them are most likely 20. And so we're keeping everything uniform.
And I will say that the residential setback for the rear setback is 25 foot. So there, I mean, there'll be further setback, but.
Yeah, but residential, it's typically we're not going to be super close, but you're you're. Yeah, but residential, it's typically, we're not gonna be super close, but your, your thought process is probably right, where if it's going and existing, somebody's gonna be way closer to the property line than
Or if you, even if you do it further, twenty-five, then you got
Yeah, then you got
All those buildings here, and then all of a sudden you got these buildings here. I mean, it, it makes more sense to keep everything uniform, so I'm, I'm gonna go with one forty-four and twenty if you guys are.
I'm good with that. I can
So do we need to do it two separate ones, or can we?
No, so you can move to approve the recommendation of the planning commission, except for the change to the setback, which you are keeping the same in the current code.
Okay.
So, and you just, you need four votes to overcome what their recommendation was, so it's just as a heads up there, so.
Okay, um, I think we can do them together.
Yes.
Um, yeah. All right, so move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, amending chapter seventeen of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to section seventeen point three-three-zero, M one general industrial district, section seventeen point three-three-eight, property development standards in section seventeen point three-four-eight, height, wait, height, area, and yard exceptions. I need to change it, right? Do we need to change something in this motion? Cause it doesn't talk about the height over there. It's just talking about the So I just add it on to the end?
Yes.
And say one hundred and forty-four feet and
So they and for the, what it's worth, we're just gonna restart this motion.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna start.
This is now all part of it. Um, no
I started reading through, I'm like, there's nowhere in here about the height or the
Yeah, so the recommendation from planning commission, this, how this goes is changing, changing the zoning code is the same procedure as changing as, like a doing a rezoning.
Yeah.
So they bring you a recommendation, R one to R two, and you can overcome it or approve it. So what you guys are doing is overriding them because their recommendation was as written except twenty-five
I'm moving to override ordinance.
And a hundred and forty-four.
Yeah, so I'm moving to override or
Overnight, override the recommendation and the ordinance, and I would say the ordinance will create a maximum height of a hundred and forty-four feet and keep the rear setback of twenty feet.
Okay.
So you can, you can move to appro- approve the recommendation of planning commission except the rear setback will be twenty feet instead of twenty-five.
Shorten it down and say, move to approve recommendation except for
Keeping the
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I move to approve. Wait.
Sorry, that's my fault. I didn't give
The way you wrote this is so
Sorry.
And for what it's worth, I, I, I helped write all those, so that's Amy and I shared this plan together. I will let her hang out for this one.
All right, I move to um approve the recommendation from the planning commission for the height of a hundred and forty-four feet, but overturn or
Overrule.
Override the setback for industrial zoning to twenty feet.
Rear setback.
Rear setback to twenty feet. Is that enough?
You can say the rest of the
And then the rest of the ordinance as presented.
Got a motion. There a second?
Second. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
All right, got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
And just one more time, we're confirming it's hundred and forty-four height and twenty-foot rear
Rear setback.
Yeah.
Not changing it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with not changing it, okay. Mr. Thrawn?
Yes.
Mrs. Feeback?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine passes four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Does made
Thank you.
Do I not vote on that one? I thought the same thing, but
Glenda?
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get it there. I don't get to do it very often.
I was like, I'm pretty sure he should, I think, but
Thank you.
Sorry for the uh, the fumble there.
All right.
Not gonna blame Amy and Spencer.
Okay, next item on the gen- agenda is number thirteen, consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixteen of resolution declaring the necessity and authorizing a survey and descriptions of land and or interest in land necessary to be condemned for the location laying out construction, reconstruction, operation, use, maintenance, and repair of the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street Roadway Improvements Project from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road with Johnson County, Kansas. For allow, you have the floor.
He's sorry, Mr. Low. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't catch the second for the um ordinance after all of that.
I think it was the second.
Mister, okay, thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you. That gave me more time to read this next suggested motion to make sure we didn't make a mess of this one too.
Um Bless you.
Okay, so a month or two ago, we brought you this same procedure for our northeast sewer, and this is the first two steps, this resolution, and then the ordinance that will be up as item number fourteen to kick off the eminent domain process if necessary um for the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street improvements here. So completely separate project, that was the sewer, this is Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street. Uh, but just for your frame of reference, it's that same process. So this is a kicking that off. The city does not plan to go out and do any unnecessary eminent domain, but given the timelines that the eminent domain statute sets out, we have to start that up now as a just in case so that the project doesn't fall weeks and months behind. So, um, and like I said, we were here two months ago-ish on the last eminent domain, and we're just now filing that action, so for your knowledge, landowners have been notified what the city's offer for any parcels are and easements necessary. No one's full parcel, just the easements there. Uh, we will continue to negotiate with anyone who wants to negotiate, even past filing a petition, and the goal is that we don't actually complete eminent domain, everyone reaches an agreement where we can all be happy, or I guess with real compromise, everyone's a little frustrated, but it gets done. So, um, that's where we are. Uh, if you have any questions on the project itself, I would direct them to Ms. Abel, but otherwise, uh, this is sort of the process to get that going.
So this is just a parallel mechanism to make sure we don't miss out on the timeline?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on that one? If not, entertaining motion.
Is this one okay, or is it
Yeah.
Real janky too? Uh, move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixteen, declaring the necessity and authorizing a survey and descriptions of land and or interest in lands necessary to be condemned for the location, laying out construction, reconstruction, operation, use, maintenance, and repair of the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street Roadway Improvements Project from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, an ordinance condemning land and or interest in land necessary for the necessi- inland necessary for the necessary, and this one's written wrong too, that's okay. Uh, to be condemned for the location, laying out construction, reconstruction, operation, use, maintenance, and repair of the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street Roadway Improvements Project from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road with Johnson County, Kansas, and directing city attorney to institute an eminent domain proceedings as provided by law to acquire the parcels of land and or interest in such parcels of land described in this ordinance. Mr. Low, you still have the floor.
All right, this is just the second part of what we just discussed, and as you make this motion, you are welcome to move as stated in the suggested motion of the agenda review sheet, unless you wanna show off your reading out loud skills.
Oh, just move to approve as the
Yeah, as this, yeah, pursuant to the suggested motion, they are
They are quite long. Yeah, so this is just the next part to move along.
Correct, yeah.
No big deal, okay. All right, I will move to approve the ordinance as stated twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Thrawn?
Yes.
Mrs. Feeback?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
She wants to leave you out tonight.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten passes five zero zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of a temporary construction easements and permanent sanitary sewer easements for the northeast sewer expansion project, and Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Okay, so a couple of meetings ago, I was before you with the first round of the northeast sewer easements. This is the second round. We've, we've received two more of the easements. I believe that is all but maybe two remaining property owners uh, for this project, so you will see me again for this project, but these are all the easements and right-of-way necessary to build the northeast sewer project that includes a pump station, force mains, gravity lines, and all the things to expand our sanitary sewer system to about a hundred and seventy-fifth and Woodland, so um, I'm available if you have any questions.
So what was their response? I guess I'm trying to read when you went ahead and approached the owners, I mean
It was favorable, yeah. Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, no, we've actually had some really good responses from uh, the property owners uh, so far. The, we've just got two remaining property owners and uh, those are still being negotiated right now.
Okay.
As I say, I feel like we've had a lot done already for
Yeah.
I figured you'd get more pushback than that, but I guess it's only temporary, right, and through construction?
Uh, so we do have temporary uh, construction easements. We have some permanent drainage, uh, permanent sewer easements for the pipelines, and then we act- actually have one property that is a deed of dedication, and that's for our pump station, so that's to give us uh, the right-of-way, uh, the ownership of that property.
Cool. Oh, well, yeah, hopefully we don't have to use the actual eminent domain and we can just work through it.
That's what I hope too.
Positive, yeah. That's always the best way.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Not entertaining motion.
Uh, move to approve temporary construction and permanent sanitary sewer easements associated with the northeast sewer expansion project. Authorize the mayor to sign these, the easement agreement, authorize the finance department to issue payment to the property owners as outlined above.
A second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you very much. That ends formal council action at this time, and we'll move on to a discussion item, and the first item is Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street Trail, and Mrs. Abel, you're still on, folks.
Okay, so um, we're working on finalizing the plans for the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street project from Ridgeview to Renner. A portion of that project is gonna be in front of the, the high school property in the administration building. Back in two thousand nineteen, the administration building was um, came to planning commission and was later constructed. Uh, with that discussion, uh, there was um talk about uh, installing a trail along the north side of Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street. During that same time, there was um discussions about making improvements to Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street, so it was decided at that time that we would kick the can down the road, so to speak, and uh, defer the installation of the trail in front of the school until we figure out what we're going to do with the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street. So here we are, we're figuring it, all that stuff out, so um the school district has committed to, uh, through that planning commission action back in two thousand eighteen to installing a ten-foot asphalt trail. Well, our design for Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street is an overachiever, and we're putting in a ten-foot concrete trail, so um the school district has committed to putting in the asphalt trail, so that's what we're going to hold them to that standard. So um, there's been a little bit of back and forth, figuring out how long, have, what the length of the trail is, what the cost of the asphalt is versus the cost of the concrete, and we've had a couple of meetings to discuss this at a staff level, talked to some uh, school um uh, school board members to kind of get some consensus on all of this, so uh the best thing for us to do to move forward, just so that everybody's on the same page, is to enter into a memorandum of understanding so that we outline all of the, the knowns. Uh, planning commission approval, kicking the can down the road, what the cost of the trail is going to be, that the city is gonna uh bridge that gap between the app, the cost of the asphalt trail and the cost of the concrete trail. Um, for simplicity's sake, we're going to base the cost of the trail off of the engineer's estimates, uh, their unit pricing, which I've included in the memorandum, memorandum of understanding. Um, also included in there is an exhibit showing the length of the trail, about twenty-four-ish hundred, twenty-four hundred feet of trail along the school property, and that's gonna be from the roundabout to the edge of the school property on the east side uh, between them and um, the Prairie Ridge subdivision. A lot of the additional information, um, we've uh, talked to the school district about making sure that the payment is done after the project has been completed, um, and then the city would invoice them for that. We also have easements um, that we need to get from the school district. I believe that's temporary construction easements and a permanent drainage easement. So we factored that in there as well to give them credit for um, that easement. So the full cost of the trail um, for the asphalt portion is a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, with our uh, cost of the easement, that is sixty-eight seventy-five. So the total amount that the school district would owe the city would be less that easement amount, which would be one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. So, um, like I said, the uh, agreement is before you. This is tonight, just as a discussion item. I will be back before you um, at the next meeting for official approval of this agreement. Um, the school district is gonna have a similar timeframe. They're gonna take this to their school board um, on Monday for their school board meeting as a discussion item, and then they will take uh, for formal action. They plan to have this on the agenda for the August eleventh, school board meeting, so their approval will be, uh, occur the Monday before our Thursday meeting. So we should have their approval ahead of us presenting it to you in the next meeting. I think that pretty much covers everything. You guys can read through the agreement, but those are kind of the high points. If you've got any questions, I'm definitely available.
Um, my only question is the cost that you're um estimating for them, is that based off today's prices or the prices of when they were originally going to do it?
This is based off of today's prices.
Okay. I hate to say this, cause I'm probably one of the biggest ones that thinks they should pay up, but I would, I would be open to um even giving them a little credit for what the pricing would have been when it should have happened, cause I know we were on the side of, hey, we're gonna redo this. So their cost going up just because we're wanting them to wait, you know, I'd be okay with giving them a little bit of break there too. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but I think if we're trying to be good partners, um, might be something to give them a little bit of break there, to say, hey, the cost was a little bit cheaper back then, but
So how do you determine that?
And we could go back in time.
As I say, you could go back
We can look at historical record.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could
Cause they did get a break, but at the same time, we, we asked them to hold off because we were redoing Hundred Ninety-Ninth, which it's been what, like three or four years now since they did the building? So, I mean, cost has gone up quite a bit, so
Yeah, I can look at the date.
Has it been that long?
Yeah, it was uh, December of two thousand nineteen, whenever they brought it to city council and uh, to the planning commission.
Well, I'm talking about, I remember talking about it when I first came on about, do they have to do the trail now or wait, and there was actually we prefer them to wait, so even if it's like, hey, what twenty-one or twenty-two pricing was, cause that was kind of, I think, when they were planning to do it.
Okay, I can look back to see when the permit was issued and go off of that year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whatever, whenever it was constructed, that's probably the timeline. I'd go
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I just, I would feel a little bit wrong by saying you gotta pay today's prices when we were kind of the ones that kind of asked them from what I remember, I don't know. Amy may remember something different. She was around then, I believe, so. But I remember it was kind of a joint, hey, let's wait on it, so.
I think that's a wonderful idea, setting a, putting us in a position where we can continue to be good uh, partners with them, I think is everything to me, so.
Yeah, and I think that's our goal, everybody's goal up here, to be a good partner with the school district. I know sometimes it's like this sometimes, but none of us like that, and none of us want that.
What I know is a little bit of a point of contention for them, so that's why I'm like, hey, we can give them a little bit there to say
Yeah.
And, you know, we're trying to make it right a little bit, you know, cause I know they were, I think they had a different idea of what we were gonna try to do over there, so um, you know, giving them a little something would be good, in my opinion.
Okay, I will provide that feedback to um, staff, to the school district staff, so that they can present that on Monday as the discussion item that we had the discussion today, and this was some of the feedback that we received.
And I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. I think that, I think that's chosen good faith effort on our part to
So they already have the memorandum of, of understanding, so then now you're gonna
Yeah, they received this copy for their packet for Monday. Um, I believe I had to have that to them yesterday, so they received this copy.
Okay.
Um, so I'll provide that feedback to them, um
I can't imagine they'd be opposed to a little bit cheaper. No, we're sticking to
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to announcements and reports. Um, I don't think I have anything. Mr. Young?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Mr. Thrawn?
I have any report.
Mrs. Feeback?
Dun dun dun. Hundred ninety-first street, do we have any updates?
Thank you.
She was, she was waiting.
This technology.
That's okay. I'm just sticking with what I said, and that is to bring it up frequently until it gets done.
Expected.
Great. Thank you, Allison.
I should have just stayed up here.
I know.
Okay, so one hundred ninety-first street signal, um, so today we had our utility coordination meeting, we met with all the utility providers uh, to get a better understanding of where their facilities are, so that they don't, um, they're not in direct conflict with uh, with ours. Uh, really positive meeting, there wasn't really too much that was in the way of our stuff, we came back with, there's a few more questions that uh, we need to get answered. Uh, we did receive approval from KDOT um, to uh, for the study, so we received the official approval. That was something new, um, so we can go ahead and move forward with um, applying for the two million dollar grant that we plan to utilize, um, they are going to allow us to um, move forward with construction and paying for this and everything like that, but we are going to wait to get reimbursed until the funds are available with KDOT, and we're okay with that, because we had fully programmed this in our CIP for this year. Um, so our next step is to submit this to KDOT. Um, we are currently working on finalizing the plans. Um, I believe Lamprey Nielsen will have those plans done here in the next couple of weeks, so that we can get those submitted to KDOT. And then that's gonna take about a six-week turnaround period for them to review uh, that larger plan set that's gonna include the signal plans and the poles and all of that stuff. So we, we continue to move forward, we tried to expedite this as much as we could um, by letting Lamprey Nielsen uh, move forward with some of the design while we were anticipating that approval from KDOT before we received it. So we continue to move forward and do all these great things, so that we can get this out to bid, hopefully still in September.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will say, is there any kind of preliminary plan that we can put out, cause I know there's been a couple of bad accidents over there?
Yeah.
The last couple of days, and that's always makes it more prevalent for us to, but yeah, I think updating and even us, I don't think I've seen one that's like a, like a legit preliminary plan for it yet.
I can bring you guys uh, an update in the next meeting, but in the meantime, I can work with Kristen um, on putting something out on our website, just to give them a snapshot update as to where we're at on the project and where we plan to be.
If nothing else, just to let everybody know.
Yeah.
As we've been saying, we're, it's almost approved.
Almost done.
Approved, it's pretty much approved.
Well, the last, the last time was the announcement that we put after that really bad accident that.
And then there was two pretty bad ones here yesterday and today.
Right, so I guess a continuation.
Seems like it's perfect timing here.
And I very rarely comment on Facebook, but I actually did comment on one of those about, about one hundred ninety-first street, cause I knew it was coming, I knew we were about there, and so just kind of at least get something out there saying, yes, we're almost to the finish line on this.
We are so close, and the fact that we had a utility coordination meeting today, and nobody's right now in the right wrong spot, utilities usually are. Um, it was very, a, a good conversation that we had today, it was very favorable.
Good.
Great, thank you, Allison. Um, the other question was, um, I cannot remember the name of the development. I had it written down, and now I can't find when I wrote it, but it's the one that, with the mowing.
Brickwood Farm. Oh, next to Bridwin.
Yeah, what's that called, Woodland?
Woodland Crossing.
Right, so are we keeping up with the mowing on that, Jacob?
I can, I can give you an update on that, sorry, I did ask Brandon today about it.
Okay.
Um, so they kept, so they have done, um, they removed all the trash, but they still need to, they're back to needing to cut down some weeds, so Brandon's mowing guy is out of town, and we'll be back and doing that next week. So I don't know that they're necessarily keeping up on it, but Brandon is, and we're, we're able now to just go in there and mow whenever we see it too long.
Okay.
And, and their property or our, is it?
It's their property.
So you're charging them?
We do, we abate the property, yep.
So what, what, what does it take for us to get to that point where we can do it when we need to?
He just has to send out, he just has to go through the process one time, so, yep, so he's already done that process, and if they don't do it, by the time it's what, eight inches, then we go in.
Are they communicating with us at all, like, are they saying, hey, we'll take care of it, or anything, and just not doing it, or are we just not hearing anything?
Um, I think she is responsive to him, I don't know, I think she was telling him that she can't get anybody to come do it, her mowing guys don't come, I think was her answer to him at one point.
And this is the same development that was trying to get rid of the, like, not do the pool and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
So I know there's some contention there with that.
Um, I will, well, it's the builder of it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, the developer.
Okay, and then my last question, and I, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, but it, it's towards you, Spencer, so you can do this motion if I can't. Um, one of the things that was mentioned was in citizen participation, that we cannot engage with people that are up there, so just so you know, like, I'm writing down those things, and I save it for this time, as we all know. So my question is, is that a rule that they can't, that we can't engage with them, cause it's, to me, it's real cold? It's like they go up there and they say something, and then we can't engage or give input or provide them some information, so if you could share that?
Sure, that is part of the citizen participation protocol that we created. Gosh, probably when.
Yeah, it was about four years.
About when you guys took over, um, sorry, not all of you, I'm looking at the mayor in chat, I saw.
I knew what you were talking about.
Yeah. That is something we can change, the standard, I would say across municipalities, at, at least from my personal experience, has been that it does not include a conversation back and forth.
Okay.
Just because that, one, there's a time limit, so that eats into their time limit of you answering questions, and very rarely is a question succinctly answered, sometimes you guys need some nuance, and sometimes you all need to kick it to staff. So that's part of it, is then we don't want some people to have more time than others, because they asked a question that happens to have a longer or complicated response. If you would like to change that, absolutely within your purview, um, we're here to enact the policies that you all want to see, as long as they comply, comply with law. Um, so we can explore that and bring you some alternatives, we can also find a way to maybe more clearly advertise the beginning of citizen participation, that questions can, will be answered to the best of our ability during these reports and announcements at the end of meetings. Um, and that oftentimes is you all have been doing, you know, asking and directing staff, these specific questions were asked, do we know an answer, if not, let's go find them, and oftentimes what you all might not see, and certainly what people here might not see, whether they're not around or they're watching from home, is staff typically tries to find people
Sure.
during or after meetings and give them that information. Um, because we can jump away and go talk in the hallway, and you all can't, and you might not see that, so we can kind of try to explain that out a little more if you'd like. Um, it's not an uncommon complaint by people, that they get up and give a citizen comment, and then they don't get a, a response to their question.
Well, and someone, if you've paid attention to the other, which I know you have, but any other city municipalities, a lot of times there can be an uncomfortable back and forth between, and sometimes it gets pretty heated. So I would love to answer every question that's asked me up here, and sometimes I do want to, and sometimes I do even answer them. Um, but it definitely can get to that point, not that any of us are scared of it getting to that point, but I think that sometime it can just be not a benefit to the public when you've got a citizen and somebody up here arguing back and forth.
So the biggest reason for my question was just to know, like, if it, like, if it is protocol, because that was the question that the citizen raised, so if that's our standard, I'm not saying we have to discuss it, I just wanted him to know that it's not just because we're deciding not to, that that's actually protocol. That is my biggest reason.
Well, yeah, we created that protocol.
And it, and it's on the sheet that they get.
And I'm not saying that we need to change it, I just wanted to make sure that he knew.
I think the difference was before that, it would be more of like a, oh, Jacob, this is probably something you can work on with this, like, it was more of at least some sort of response, which I wouldn't be opposed to, I think, yeah, just this blank stare back is sometimes kind of awkward, but to say, oh, this person may be good, or somebody back there is like, oh, that's actually, like with Amy, where she jumped up, she goes, oh, actually, I can give you an update on that, so.
Okay.
Maybe us just being better about that at the moment, it feels better sometimes than somebody just saying, oh, yeah, you're just gonna look at me like I'm an idiot.
Yeah.
Which is what we normally hear, right, and it, that's what it feels like.
Yeah.
So I think maybe adding a little bit at, in, but yeah, the back and forth, I think, would probably be counterproductive.
Yeah, well, and I think sometimes we have, maybe not as much as we should, sometimes we have directed staff in.
Yeah, a lot.
Especially if it's something that we're pretty confident, we know we can get them an answer pretty quickly. Um, we have directed, you know, hey, Jacob, can you do this, hey, Allison, will you get this, or hey, Lane, can you get this, make sure it gets, gets taken care of. So we do try to address, whether it's in that moment, or later on, we do try to address every concern that comes to us.
Yeah, but a lot of people will come and do their citizen participation and leave, so they don't hear this part.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, then it becomes a, you never addressed it.
Mm-hmm.
And for what it's worth, the planning commission follows the same protocol.
Yeah.
And they get the exact same responses, that they come up and make a comment, and people don't respond, so.
Okay, and then lastly, this is kind of directed at you, I'm sorry. You get a question, yes, the leash thing with the dogs, is that something that you've?
No, I need to follow up with, with Chief and Adam, I haven't done that yet.
You have my support on that, I just wanted to vocalize that, cause I know that citizen that came up, I just wanted to see where we were at with that, it's not, it wasn't necessarily to put you on the spot, I just want you to support you on that, so if you need help.
No, but I just haven't had a minute yet, but I will, I'll set something up with uh, with Chief and Adam on that.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
No report.
Mr. Massey?
No report.
Mr. Lau?
No report.
Chief Sutterby? We're not currently.
I think Allison messed it up.
Alright, I think we got it.
Yeah.
Um, just letting everybody know, um, that uh, next Friday, at first Friday, uh, myself and a couple of other officers will be at uh, out downtown, and we'll be in the dunk tank. So if you want to come out and uh, try to dunk Spring Hill's finest, come on out, I hope you have good aim, so, anyway.
Mrs. Abel?
Uh, I just wanted to give you just a, a little bit of an update on two hundred and twenty-third street.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we did meet with KDOT last week, I want to say. I gave them the update on all the alternatives, we've got some new alternatives that have not been shared yet. Wanted to get their reaction before we shared those, um, to make sure that they fit their criteria and all the things, and that we would get support. Uh, our next step is to, um, they had suggested, you know, maybe getting some current traffic counts at some of those intersections, so I'm talking with one of our traffic engineers to um, set up some cameras and get those traffic counts, so that we can get some real-time counts to figure out if these alternatives will be workable or not. So we are working behind the scenes, it may not seem like we're doing too much, but we are doing a lot of these like incremental things, because we want to make sure that the next time we come before you uh, and schedule the public engagement, um, that we have this completely uh, worked out and everything like that, from all the different angles, so we're working on it, just wanted to give you that update. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Long, I'll go ahead and give you an opportunity to add anything, if you have any.
No.
I know, alright. Matt Clerk? Misses Dunn?
Report.
Mr. Spear?
Just wanted to mention that we're close to wrapping up uh, this summer's street maintenance program, the uh, asphalt work will, well, weather depending, should be completed this week, the current schedule has them finishing uh, the asphalt portion of this year's project, um, Saturday, uh, is, is the current schedule. Next week, uh, the, uh, company will come in to do the chip ceiling, it's, if you'll remember, it's just two roads, uh, not a lot of chip ceiling on this year's program. The not so much part of the street maintenance program, but we bid it together, there's also this year's cars project, which uh, includes improvements on two hundred seventh street between uh, Woodland and Webster. Uh, that will be following, have a hard date yet, but probably in the September timeline uh, to do that work, so it's a a little different type of work, a little more extensive than our street maintenance program, so that'll follow in the fall. That will wrap up our street maintenance program, um, just in case any of you have questions, because we had questions. Uh, there was some, speaking of chip seal, there was some chip seal work that happened on Webster today uh, from about two hundred first street down to two hundred seventh. Uh, that work was performed by, by the county. Um, we unfortunately weren't able to get any advance notice out. Um, I learned about it when, when the equipment rolled in as well, so um, we apologize for that, uh, but um, that, that was, that chip seal work was completed by the county and not done as a part of uh, the city's street maintenance program this year. Yes, yeah, it was uh, but county, county crews at, at county expense, not, not anything that the city was involved in.
I have two things for you real quick, one, the feedback on the street maintenance this year has been very positive with more asphalt, I know it's not nearly as much, but I think it's much, much more well-received than the chip seal, so take that as you may, but I, I will say, I'm happy with how you did it this year, and how you split it up, relative to previous years, how we've done it. Uh, two was, were we able to get notices out for the sidewalk project yet?
We don't have notices out, we're looking at uh, those will go out soon, we're looking at um, late August, um,
For the meeting?
In the twenty-first, twenty-second timetable, and I, I'll, I will take the blame for that, part of that is my availability, um, I will be out of town the week before that, so um, just to provide enough time and give people enough notice, we moving that back a week.
I'm okay with that. Cool, I just wanted to, I, I didn't talk about it, so.
Yeah, it's nice seeing South Webster getting repaved, that one was pretty rough. Um, I did want to mention one thing to you, Jacob, and I know I had already talked to Lane about it, so he's probably already talked to you about it. Um, but I know, I know we have plans to tear it all up when we do the one hundred ninety-first street light, but can we get the potholes repaired between one sixty-nine and Woodland on one hundred ninety-first street, there are some pretty bad ones in there, and I don't even live over there, and I've driven over there multiple times, and it's jolted the crap out of my trucks. And I'm sure everybody else that has to drive that road lived there, so if we could, if we could at least, like I say, I know we're gonna tear that road up, and it's gonna be all new, but if we can at least get the potholes filled soon.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that, um.
And even the turn, if you turn onto Woodland, turn to the south, that turn when they, when they did that road, they didn't provide a curve, so you actually have to drive into the other lane to get back into the right lane, because it's just a, it's just a drop-off right there.
Yeah, that, I, I know exactly the point you're talking about, um, that, there was a, back to um, the, the county put a culvert uh, in um, part of the county's network, right after we redid Woodland, and, and that got squared up, and, and the uh, the radius or the curve was lost in that, that project, so yeah, we will get that, uh, we'll get that done. I will say, you, you mentioned one hundred ninety-first street, that, that signal project will re, will replace the pavement uh, back to Webster?
Yeah, that goes back to Webster only.
Yeah, so some of that still won't get replaced there, and some of that's pretty bad there.
And then, and then we also have, um, just first, I want to reiterate, we will absolutely get those potholes patched, um, the condition of that is not lost on us, um, it, the remainder of one hundred ninety-first from Webster over to Woodland is our, is our twenty-twenty-six cars project as well. So that, um, that road is slated for replacement, in the meantime, we'll get those.
Yeah, I, I knew we were gonna tear it all up and replace it, but I just, it's, it's pretty bad for the people that live over there, or drive anywhere in that area, or if you're, e- even if you're going to Moody's or anywhere else, you know, if you come from that east side, it's, it's pretty rough.
Yeah.
And I see cars swerving into the other lane to get around the potholes, and that can create a wreck too, so. Alright, with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Alright, it's a big one.
Real quick, Jed, you can drop out, there's one name on there, Colby, you can cross him off the attendees of this one.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that name.
Yeah, you're welcome for announcing that.
Krizniewski, I guess it's not that bad. Alright, I move the city council recess to executive session for twenty-five minutes to receive advice of council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at eight twenty-eight P M, no formal action is anticipated following the procession, persons to be in attendance are the following, Lane Massey, Rhonda Dunn, Rick McConnell, Emma Kate Dillon, Ben Hart, Spencer Lau.
Second. Got a motion, seconds, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero, seat soon. Motion carries four zero zero, seat soon.
All right, welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect the governing body reconvened open meeting at 8:28 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
This one's for five minutes, but I'm gonna add five minutes for a quick break. So, move the city council recess into executive session for five minutes to receive advice to council regarding threatened or potential litigation pursuant to KSA 754319B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:40 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. Spencer Lau.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries four zero zero.
What time did you say?
Eight forty.
Yeah.
All right, welcome back everybody. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened to open meetings at 8:40 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. Discussion was limited to subjects stated. And with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number three.
This one's for ten minutes, so I move the city council recess into executive session for ten minutes. To receive advice of council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA 7543-19B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:52 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey and Spencer Lau.
Second.
Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries four zero.
Zero.
No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number four for 15 minutes.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at, oh, this one's not as easy, 9:09 PM. No formal actions anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Spencer Lau, City Attorney.
Second.
Got a motion second. Is there any further discussions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Decent. Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened to open meeting at 9:09 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Have a great night everyone.